I was gonna try and.
We good? Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order. It's Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes and reports received and filed. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Uh, the LEPC first quarter meeting is still today, right? That one didn't get canceled?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to go through.
Then, uh, emergency, emergency response to rail incidents, is that one the one that got canceled?
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
No. Still on. That's at one today?
Oh, okay.
Okay, maybe the one that got deleted.
Was the one yesterday?
There was an LEPC meeting last week that got canceled.
Okay. Um, we got a Board of Realtors meeting tomorrow, and then we got a commission meeting Thursday afternoon. Got the dedication for the Blair Oaks High School Saturday from ten to two is an open house. I think the ceremony's at 11:00. So come out and check out the new facilities if you want. I think that's about it.
The, uh, the Thursday meeting that you mentioned, Jeff, is the, includes the ARPA advisory meeting?
Correct.
Uh-huh.
On Friday, Eric is anticipating Tanner Ridge bids. Bid opening, yes. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Today, I'm gonna try to go to the LEPC quarterly meeting. Tomorrow, I have a central workforce development meeting, Thursday's ARPA, Friday Chamber Leadership Forum, and I'll be at Blair Oaks as well. So that's all I've got. Okay, bids and contracts, approval and sign of Cole County, no, approval and sign of Cole County Stat Pack Bags 2022.
So this is a quote for our new equipment bags. This was included in this year's capital budget. It did come back, I believe like $700 under what we had budgeted this for. So I was asking that you sign and approve that today. These are all bought off of our supply co-op, so. There's no signature line on that. It's just a quote.
Just have to okay the purchase of them?
Yes.
I'm good.
This is a motion to approve and sign the Cole County Stat Pack Bags for 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't have to sign anything you said.
You do not.
Okay. Okay, approval and signing of Cole County EMS Tahoe four-wheel drive.
So again, this is a budgeted item. This is the, uh, new command vehicle. As we discussed, during budget time, we're purchasing a year early due to the anticipated delay in delivery. This quote with an estimated delivery date of fall of this year, this comes back at $39,271, which is about $2,500 over what we had quoted only two months ago. So I'm just asking for your permission to go ahead and sign this and get this ordered. Again, this is off of government co-op.
Okay.
A motion to approve and sign the Cole County EMS Tahoe four-wheel drive for fall delivery.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna jump around just a little bit, uh, 'cause Judy's here. We have, uh, at our MAC conference in November, they gave out awards and our asses- or Record of Needs won a Cole County, uh, award in recognition of innovative efforts to serve Missouri citizens, uh, electronic aperture card conversion. Where'd Judy go? Come on up front.
It's easy for you to say.
Yeah.
Now, what did that, what did that mean?
Means she got in the war. Means she got in the war. But anyway, thank you. We appreciate.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, turn your water around. You're welcome to stay. Okay. And then, then we are, we are deviating again because we have Lincoln Brown here. Last week, we had voted on, uh, the CDBG grant, and today we need to do a resolution to formally sign the CDBG grant. And Lincoln Brown.
It's up to you, whatever you'd like to do. I have copies as well.
So we've got two, ones for the EMS station, ones for the stormwater.
This is a motion to adopt a CDBG resolution for the Cole County EMS station project, a motion to, uh, to do so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a resolution to, um, sign, intend to seek the CDBG for the Cole County Westview Stormwater Improvement Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And Don, you've got your, 'cause these have to be notarized, so if I sign these?
Yes.
Yes.
I have it.
You have it? You're okay.
Lincoln, is there, uh, more from you to hear?
I have, without, without document itself, it needs to be signed as well.
Okay.
Because we're kind of under a tight timeframe, you said you have to.
And we need to get that in, so if you wanna.
Has everything unfolded in the last seven, eight days as, uh, as hoped for?
Everybody's been, yes, everybody's gotten everything we needed. Uh, the last bit from the county was the meeting minutes for the hearings last week, which were approved. Uh, so I've gotta insert those in this document yet, as well as the signature pages. But the county section will be done. I've got a little bit of work left to do on the cities yet today, and we'll try to meet up with Gary tomorrow or Thursday at the latest to get it in. Their next review session is Friday. So as long as we have it in before Friday, we're good, we're in good shape to be on their docket for Friday.
Okay. And the council took the action last Tuesday evening to?
They did. Yeah, I was, I was attending via, uh, online for that in case I had any questions, but I think you spoke and.
I did. And Eric was.
And Eric spoke as well.
Chief was there as well.
Yeah, they, they didn't have any comments or questions and everything. Everybody, it's all signed. The intergovernmental agreement is complete, so.
Very good.
Okay, you wanna?
Yeah. Right? I'd just like to thank Lincoln and Missouri planning as well. This is half the application. We went from zero to about 100 in the last week of preparing this and getting this application together. So he's done a lot of great work for us.
Okay.
So this is the Section 3 utilization agreement. This is just essentially that you're gonna attempt to hire low to moderate income residents as part of the CDBG project.
Okay.
And these are the certifications for, that you have E-Verify and anti-labbing certification in there. This is one that has to be notarized as well.
Okay. Good thing, Don. Okay, here.
And this is the, this, all of the attachments are actually in the application. So if you wanna verify those, I can take you through the application real quick. Financial statements, as you can see, are attached at the back. Uh, the MOU, E-Verify notification is in here as well. Let's go to the front. Uh, there's the letters of support.
Okay.
Here's the E-Verify, uh, attachment as well. Uh, here, yeah, all of your grant policies are attached in here as well. Yeah, conflict of interest, procurement policies, excessive use of force resolutions, those are all in there. And the intergovernmental agreement is right at the back of this section.
Okay.
Good thing you trust him.
I double verified, but I'm gonna send you guys a, a digital copy here.
No, we pre-assed, pre-teased it. I thought maybe he was signing over his house to you there.
Well, yeah, and, and initial. That's the other thing too, is initialing that those aren't actually present. Yeah, it is kinda a little bit like signing for a house.
I go down to Mexico and just stay down there, Jeff.
Second.
Hell, I'll vote for that.
Okay.
I'll put these and I'll take these.
Okay.
I can get the, I can get it on the.
You got to.
Yep.
Television there, TV from the beach.
Yes. Oh, jeez.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all yours. Yeah, you can have all that.
Let's flip this. There we go. These are our, our bears to get finished, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Lincoln. Appreciate all your work on this.
Okay, so we will go back to our regular agenda, uh, approval and signing of surplus tigl.
Anyone? Anyone? Maybe we did that right.
Okay, we'll table it. Uh, signing of MOA with the State Public Health Laboratory.
So this is for EMS to access the COVID-19 test results directly from the State Public Health Lab system. Currently, we have to enter those through public health. Uh, their staff has to go in and relay that information once those results are, are received back to us. So this would take, uh, some off their plate and, and kinda cut out the game of telephone. So just ask that you sign this MOA so that we can have access to that portal.
There is no.
All right, I'll make a motion to sign the memorandum, memorandum of agreement with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Public Works Equipment Purchase Approvals, uh, A, a mini excavator.
We have a few items on the list here to do, and these are in our budget, uh, with the exception of the hydrocedar from Turf Maker. We were told that was on Mo-bys. It is not, or we could not find it. Found that out yesterday, so we'll actually have to bid that. So that's not on, we need to take that one off the agenda for today, but we'll do the other three. The mini excavator, that's with Crown Power Equipment. The price is $68,112.52. It's a Kubota. Uh, last year, we rented a mini excavator, ran, ran it with two crews. It was very effective to have that extra machine, especially if, if it was too dry for our grader operators to be blading roads. We can take a greater crew, a greater operator crew and, and put them on some small projects, uh, some small pipes and things like that, and work on some items on the gravel road. So this'll be very effective for us to add this machine. It's in our budget for this year, and so we just need approval to move forward with the purchase through Sourcewell on this one. Any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
We do them one, we're gonna do them one at a time?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, and I don't have anything to sign. It's just.
Okay.
Yes.
Motion to approve the purchase of the mini excavator for $68,000. I'm sorry, I didn't get the last part of that.
$68,112.52.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 15-inch rotary cutter.
Uh, this is a brush hog. Um, you see him on the highways quite a bit. MoDOT uses them on their rideaway. It's a, it's a pretty, it's a bat wing, um, pretty wide. We have several roads that have enough, enough width of rideaway that we can utilize this machine. Currently, we run, we have four boom mower districts, and the boom mower, it's a, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a six-foot?
Five.
Five-foot. And, um, it's gotta make several passes on some of these areas. So in talking with our staff, actually going back a few years, um, this idea's been out there as going to three mower oper- mower operator districts and taking the extra machine, changing it over to this pull behind brush hog, and that, that individual will be a floater and floater into the different districts. And, um, we feel this is the way to go. It'll help us be more productive and, um, be able to utilize, um, when that machine's not running, utilize that person on another crew. So, um, this will require changing out one of the tractors, uh, to do the, to do the pull behind. So it's a 15-foot brush hog. It's with Henderson Implement. It's on the MoDOT contract, and the price is $27,854.46. And it's, uh, the manufacturer is Schulte.
Yep, I'm fine with it. I was just concerned 'cause the agenda said 15-inch rotary cutter.
That's what I thought too.
Oh.
She might rework, yes.
That'd take a little time.
Oh.
Uh, motion to approve the 15-foot rotary cutter brush hog for the $27,854.46.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A hydrocedar.
No, we're skipping that.
Oh, we're skipping that one, okay. The 20-ton equipment trailer?
Um, so this is, um, the vendor is Holden Industries. It's on the state contract. Uh, the price is $27,658. Manufacturer's Holden. It's a 20-ton trailer used by the asphalt crew to haul the backhoe to their projects, and the current one's over 30 years old, and it's rusted out, needs to be replaced. So we just recommend approval to move forward with this purchase.
Yep, I love it.
Motion to approve the, uh, purchase under state contract, a 20-ton equipment trailer, $27,658.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have right now, and we'll, um, pipe cedar when we work with Jessica to bid that out.
Okay.
Process.
Okay, renewal one of generator maintenance services.
This is our first renewal for our generator maintenance with Cummins Incorporated. They have agreed to keep their pricing the same for this year, and Greg's pleased with their services, so today I'm just needing approval and signing of the renewal.
I'm good.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to sign the renewal with Cummins Incorporated for general, generator maintenance services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business accounts payable reviewed.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, next is public hearing on the vacation of the southernmost portion of Murphy's Ford Road. Do we have anybody who would want to speak on this issue? Okay. If it's not, so we will close it, and we will go with Eric.
So initially, we had the first public hearing and first public comment on October 5th, as the statute requires. And then it has to sit for the remainder of the term and to be taken up as soon as possible in the next term. With, uh, some staff outages and COVID hitting, we had to push it back a little bit. But we did meet with, uh, the two people who spoke at the last, at the last time we met in October, on October 5th. And part of their concern with taking all the way down to East Miller, West Miller, was losing the turnaround and also losing bus service and, um, mail service down the road to where we have it permanently closed off now at the top of the hill where the barricade is. Um, so, you know, after some consideration and some talking, we don't have a problem with that, uh, taking it from that portion back to the portion to the north, uh, at Mr. Steck's property, at, uh, his southern driveway into his, uh, his vet lot there. So, um, looking at it and coordinating with him, uh, we do have attached to that is the revised, um, or in the commission order, I should say, is a revised legal description that does not take or no longer takes it all the way down to East Miller Road. We've got a turnaround there now that we turned the snowplow around. Um, we'll just have to do a little bit of work to it, but essentially, it would be the same way it is now, as far as, as far as what the road would be. Probably look to take the slab out in the future and coordinate with Mr. Steck. And then that portion of, uh, Murphy's Ford from, uh, the top of the hill where the barricade is now, down to East Miller, West Miller, that will have to be renamed, but we're already working with him on some names on that with our addressing coordinator. So we recommend approval.
So the, the two property owners that were here in October, their, their comments were considered and, and modified to?
Absolutely.
To meet their.
Yep.
Request.
We met again, talked with Mr. Steck a couple times over the last couple months, and then I met with, uh, Elaine Miller, a couple weeks ago, and then spoke with her on the phone again, and they're, they're quite happy with this proposal right here.
And it, it resolves the main issue of, uh, oil water crossing and, and issues they've had down there. So it takes care of the main issue, still leaves the road on top of the hill, then went back towards East Miller, but, uh, that is okay with us.
Well, that hill's a maintenance nightmare.
Absolutely.
It's a goat path.
Yeah.
So I think that's actually a good move to get it off of our maintenance list, so. Okay.
I'll make a motion to sign the court order, uh, vacating southernmost portion of Murphy Ford Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you just need one signed copy?
Just one, and then it will go to.
Okay.
Right?
Oh, I started signing it.
Okay.
Yeah, just one.
Okay, we've got that. Proposed Commissioner District Changes.
Can you hear us?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I have handed out and sent out the information on both the details and the maps for the proposed mission district. It's basically gonna be, um, a difference in population between the two districts of 1,025. And, um, I think, uh, it also will follow, um, ward districts in Jefferson City and, um, I think it could expand to the forward left. So I think everybody probably has a chance over at it. Anybody have any questions or what, if there any? Anything else on that one?
Uh, Clerk Coursemire, uh, we tried to, uh, make your job not difficult, maybe as easy as possible with respect to how you have to get your ballots together. Does, does it meet those, uh?
Yes, it follows our, the boundary lines for the city, so yes.
Okay.
Yeah, makes it easier.
Yeah, that's why we, that's why we cut that census block, um, where the city cut, cut it at that ward, so. Make it easier for your office.
Thank you.
Well, it makes it easier for voters too, if you have split precincts and.
Less confusion, less ballots.
Absolutely. So, okay. Yeah, nice job. I appreciate it.
Yes, very good job.
All right, so I'll entertain any questions or anybody wants any details, but I, I've got the handouts there, so if anybody wants to look at it, there should be several copies there.
Question?
We have to have a hearing on that, or do we just approve it?
I think we approve it. We have the authority to approve it. We've worked, Melissa and I have worked back and forth a number of, uh, options. This seems to be the, uh, the best.
Yeah, this was, this was the best option that, from all the scenarios that we went through, that I could come up with. Still have the logical boundaries.
We tried, uh, to, to think of the, the clerk and his duties, and we also, you know, it's, it's supposed to be 50/50. We tried to get as close as that we could. We also tried to get as close to 50/50 of the city of Jefferson in east and west, as well as the county outside the city.
City and county total, so.
And there really weren't many changes to make this happen, um, but, uh.
No, just those highlighted areas on the map. Um, I also did a detailed map. Um, I think both of, you should both have both of those, um, maps to look at, so we can kinda see what the roads are that are the dividers of the change through.
It just looks funny because the map shows a area is a lot larger on the east side, so.
Right, you've got more acres.
Signs.
You've got more, yeah, you've got, you've gotta put out more signs. You've got, you've got more, uh, you've got more picnics and, uh, chili dinners to go to now, right?
Yeah, I'm not gonna complain about those.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt the district boundary lines for eastern, western district of Cole County as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks, Melissa, for all your good work on this.
Yes, thank you, my man.
Are you feeling okay?
I'm feeling great.
Good.
Jeff, just precaution.
Yeah.
She didn't want us making her say.
Okay, uh, Public Works Fueling System Upgrade Project Discussion.
We've been working on this idea for a little bit now, and, um, in a nutshell, the fueling system that we have serves all county vehicles and all hours of the day. It's been working, but it's been a little, um, it's outdated. The, the pumps are the rotary dial, and we're not confident that we're getting good readings out of that in order to build back, to bill back to the other departments. The, um, the Fuel Master, the actual software system, it's limited due to the, the pumps being outdated. We did, Tyler put together, you wanna come up and talk a little bit? Tyler Clark's our mechanic supervisor, has done a lot of legwork on putting this information together to get it to where, um, we can present it and move forward with a possible project. So, like I said, we, we handle all the fueling for all the county departments and bill back the different departments for their usage, and everything runs through us. The, the pumps are in need of replacement, uh, the fuel system, uh, the fuel tracking or the, the software system does not need to be replaced, we found out recently. It just needs an upgrade. Uh, with the upgrade, it'll give us better capability to, um, track the, the fuel usage of each vehicle. Also, through that system, we track, uh, maintenance, um, intervals on the vehicles as well. So, um, the cost, and this is a rough cost, we'll have to bid it, and it's not accurate because of some things we found out more recently, but a little over $71,000, and this would include changing out all the pumps. It would add, uh, a pump or, you know, a pump for.
Station for biodiesel.
Station for biodiesel. Currently, a- as you know, we had the biodiesel tank grant. We got that last year. With that, um, currently, we, we have to track manually. That's not through the system. By adding this new tank and adding more capacity and changing out the pumps, we can now tie that into the system, actually have it operate within the same system, and we'll be able to track that along with everything else through the system instead manually. Uh, additionally, we'll add another pump handle for unleaded. Uh, currently, we just have one for unleaded. All the sheriff vehicles and everything, non-diesel comes out of there, and there's just one for that. So, um, there.
I thought you were gonna bring up that we drove off with the pumps still and then.
I would have, however, there's been other people that have done.
Oh, okay, God, I feel so bad.
We're gonna have to sign it.
I just want the videos.
Yes, uh, it, it happens, and actually, because of what you guys, you guys have done, there's a quick connect to where it just snaps off and we can snap it back together instead of having to replace the whole thing. So, um, thanks, John, for adding that into that. So, um, basically, we wanna go through the process of bidding this out and, uh, changing out the whole system. Again, it'll, it'll be an upgrade to our, our current system, plus it'll add the capability to do, run the biodiesel through it and add the extra pump for unleaded. So whenever the sheriff comes out, um, we don't have to wait in line. We can have multiple fueling at the same time. So that'll be a big help as well. So again, the, the rough cost is $71,000. It'll have to be bid, and just due, due to some changes that have come about since we put this together back in August when we submitted our budget, um, it'll be different than that, but it'll be relative.
More than that probably, is what you're saying, 'cause it's a little outdated.
The fact that we don't have to change out the software, we'll reduce it a little bit, but then some additional things. It may, it's, it's hard to say right now. It'll be in the ballpark.
Swag right now, so. I guess you're wanting to pay for part of it. How much of the grant was gonna pay for it?
The grant will pay for the tank, or 50% match of the tank and one of the pumps, or half of one of the pumps.
Out of pocket will actually be less than $71,000.
Yeah.
Okay, and then you're gonna take it out of the 15% capital improvement.
15% capital improvement, the courthouse portion that stays. 15% capital improvement, the courthouse portion that stays with you all.
And we have, the sheriff's department uses it, EMS uses it, health department, so.
Everybody uses it, EMS and sheriff.
It's not just a public works thing, so.
Correct, yeah, and they're, they're in it all, all day long, all night long.
Is there a maintenance, on that then, a yearly maintenance cost on it after that? On the big software?
There's, I don't think there is.
If we ever integrate a photograph to tracking Fuel Master costs, there will be.
Yeah.
But, and we hope to get there in the future. But for right now, we're not wanting to purchase that module until we find out how well the it's possible to work with.
Well, I'll just bring up again, I think this is a good time to start that five cent a gallon cost that we could attest. So that way, when I'm buying it, it goes into a separate account that he doesn't have to find. When something does go wrong with that fuel system, they have to find the money in their budget to fix it. And if we were paying an extra nickel for a gallon of gas, it would cost me some money. But EMS can do 10 cents, but if we did a
Well, there's his full service over.
That would build up in a pot of money so that when he does need to replace something, he's got a pot of money to go to and it wouldn't, it wouldn't cost him and they wouldn't have to find it.
We talked about it when we were preparing our budget this past year, decided against it just because we wanted to get through changing this out first.
Sure.
And then we'd investigate. So we manage it, we do handle the administrative side of billing the different departments. Plus, there's maintenance on the, on the units as well. That all comes out of the Public Works budget essentially for that. And so what John's proposing is a, we would just add a surcharge to what they use, five cents, two cents a gallon, whatever it is.
It's fair, it's a fair, it's fair.
So I, let's get through
That's kind of a separate thing than approving this to me.
It is, but I think it's the next step moving forward to where we can efficiently track everything and properly pay for the items when it's time to maintain them.
Do you have a ballpark figure of how much you want to build into an account annually? How many gallons do you run through there in a year? It's five cents times the gallon, so enough to buy you a new Public Works station or?
I'm gonna
You could average probably $2.70 a gallon and divide that by 280,000, something like that.
We're spending, I think we're more than that. It's, I think we're about
But you guys wouldn't pay the five cents, so.
Yeah.
It would be what we would build over time and is that, we would have to investigate whether or not five cents or two cents would be the most equitable for us to build a maintenance program. But once again, that could go towards buying another module or photograph which will make it tons easier to track. And then the billing can come right out of that, too. But once again, you have to purchase the module which you could help technically pay for.
Absolutely. What's that?
I'm going to, I'm going to guesstimate in excess of 100,000 gallons go through there a year. So, you know. And I, we'd have to go back and look at some historical information on what we paid to maintain the system over the years. But ultimately, we get to where this fund could pay for like pump upgrades and everything.
I mean, it'd be able to do little fixes for you. I don't think it's going to be, it won't be able to, you know, pay for anything outright. But you know, if, just say hypothetically, if we do have law enforcement cars driving off with the nozzles in the vehicle, maybe it comes to a point that, you know, you can only exercise that quick disconnect so many times and you got to replace it. So maybe just small things like that that you can repair. Because the true cost of what you're paying, I don't think you're going to be able to find out because you, between your administration, working on that stuff, him working on it, and your staff, I just don't think it's a number you'll be able to truly find.
Yeah. We kicked around the two cents a gallon back when we were talking about it last August and when we were preparing our budget. But again, we didn't feel like now was the time to do that. We wanted to get through changing out everything before we move forward with that next step. But I think it's the logical next step and probably will present that through next week's budget.
Yeah, why don't we, let's go ahead and approve this and then let's get some figures and stuff and we can put it back on the agenda.
Yes, I just wanted to get this on the table for discussion purposes, whether to move forward with, with bidding it out and then also to take it out of the 15% capital improvement fund for the courthouse. If that's okay to proceed.
Yeah, right.
So. We will proceed as is, work with Jessica for preparing the bid documents and everything and go through her normal process and come back to you at some point in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tyler.
Okay. Ambulance purchase RFP. I was going to print that thing out. It looks like it's like 50-some pages.
It is.
Damn.
So, just a quick recap of how we've arrived here. So, in October, as we began looking at purchasing the three ambulances budgeted for this year, based on employee feedback, customer feedback, we felt it necessary to evaluate what the next generation of Cole County ambulance is going to look like. So, over, over the next couple of months, we met with the prominent vendors in, in our area. Received presentations from them. We continued to demo their prototypes, test drive. We visited factories, solicited crew input. And all of that information was culminated in this 61-page document here, which is our specifications and request for proposal. So this document is a lot of hard work and input from, from our staff to basically build an ambulance on paper without any input from, from manufacturers. You know, it's a document that represents what we as a department want our ambulances to look like. So, a lot of hours, a lot of discussion and debate. And I really feel that we've come up with some of the safest and most crew-friendly ambulances that are going to be in the region. So, we're asking that, for permission to proceed with the RFP and start that process and see where it takes us.
Chief, in your, in your due diligence here, you've touched on maybe four or five manufacturers? Or what's the population?
Yeah, so, so obviously, two of the manufacturers that we work with represent several lines of ambulances. They may have only demoed or brought one specific model. However, the manufacturer in Arkansas represents three different service lines. And the manufacturer out of Columbia represents three or four as well. So, they, the various manufacturers will all be well represented by, by those dealerships.
Okay.
Good. I think we need to just keep moving forward.
I don't know, do we feel like we need a formal motion or can we just go ahead?
What, does it take a formal?
I don't think so. To do, to do an RFP, I don't think we Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. ARPA lost revenue.
So we have an expenditure report that's due the end of January. And I know you guys heard from BKD that they have changed with the final rule. According to lost revenue, there's two options now. One is the calculation where we can sit and calculate. The second is taking a standard allowance of up to $10 million. I need a decision so on that January report, we can choose one option or the other. Once you make that determination, you can't go backwards. So whichever choice you choose is the one you're going to stick with. I don't see any downfall to choosing the standard allowance. I don't think BKD does either. But I need a vote from you guys as to which one you want to choose.
You and I have discussed this and I don't see a downside. Our, BKD doesn't see a downside. It gives us more flexibility.
Yes.
It only, it only helps our flexibility of where to spend the money.
Yes.
Does not further restrict. If we were to pick something less than 10 million, I guess we could. It just puts more restrictions on ourselves.
Yes.
So, I don't see a downside to taking the standard allowance, which is 10 million.
Yeah. Kind of what I wish.
You did a preliminary calculation just to come up and it was a 2.1 or something like that million?
Yeah, and that was before we dug into, yeah.
And that was, that was the final interim regulations as opposed to the final, final regulations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that was my only concern is if it, it doesn't restrict it any more than what it was. It actually gives you more flexibility, so.
Right.
Makes perfect sense to go that route.
And it eliminates that time-consuming calculation and of the dollar amount.
Right. I'll make a motion to adopt the ARPA standard allowance for loss of, loss revenue, which is $10 million. So, period.
Second.
Discussion.
Any other discussion?
Just, so out of about 14.9 million, 10 million is over here in this one column now, which we can sub-column out of there.
Yes, it can be used for any governmental services.
Good, okay.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any other issues? Ah, well, Jeff's back though, so he can handle it.
Bring it.
Okay. Move to recess before 3:00.
What's it worth, do you? I thought maybe Jeff, since he missed last week, he'd like to catch up on a motion, too.
Kristi, do you want to, you want to give a, have an update on?
I don't, I don't have any recent hospital numbers. We didn't have a call yesterday and we had talked about not having a call tomorrow just because not much has changed. I think statewide, it looks like the numbers for Omicron have, have peaked. And I hope that we're on the, going to kind of go on the downhill. I know Boone County is still surging, which is ironic since they have but I'm hopeful that we have kind of got past that surge. It seems like we have, are caught up on all the backlog of data. Staff did work overtime last week to catch up on all that data that we hadn't received for about a month. So, we're doing better.
So is testing still an issue right now or is that
I'm not sure, you know, they had a, the DHSS had another testing event last Sunday that was free to the public. I haven't got the report on how many people went through there. But, you know, we had received reports that testing was an issue. And I reached out to DHSS and they provided us with a couple of resources that the hospitals could contract with that would come in and do the testing and provide the staff and do all of it. And I know one hospital indicated they were going to reach out to that resource. I'm not sure if they did, but they haven't been complaining about testing anymore, so to us.
So the testing that you're talking about having troubles, I guess, getting people in, that's not the rapid test that they're sending to you in the mail? Or is that the same kind of test that you take down in Mexico to get home?
Probably, probably antigen tests. And then some of them will run a rapid PCR and some of them will send it to a laboratory.
They seem to have plenty of those around or you can go down two blocks to.
It's staffing, it's a staffing issue for our hospitals because
They had two people in a hotel room and room 101 and walked in, you just in and out there in about five minutes, so.
Well, they probably didn't bill insurance, yeah.
I don't know, but they asked me to bend over and drop my pants and I got a little concerned.
It's, you know, the paperwork aspect. They didn't bill your insurance, they didn't document it in the EHR, you know. But it's, it's a staffing issue. And, you know, they have staff orders, they have staff that are out and they have a lot of turnover. So it's, it's a staffing issue.
Yeah, but I mean, there's so many resorts down there and every one of them is doing it. So I'm just curious at how that's getting done. Two people and each one of them doing their own thing, it's a lot of people, so.
I don't know, Eric, have you heard anything from, about census that's live in either?
I mean, we're still, we still can't get antigen testing supplies. However, we have not heard a lot from our healthcare partners.
And I haven't heard anything from DHSS about opening it up to order. They're pretty silent.
Well, they still don't do anything. I mean, just tell you've got COVID, go home, stay away from people until you get that sick, you know.
Look what it did to Nick.
Being campaigning.
It looks a little better. Just teasing Nick. We're like family now, we're going to pick on you, too.
Boone County, the health department's revamping their reporting, so they didn't give any reports yesterday, so.
Right, I think, yeah, because of staffing, they're not even, they're going to change their reporting. And there are also, a lot of counties are changing their contact tracing strategy.
Are they trying to do anything as far as treatments or changing how they're treating it or anything? Or is that still, they're just doing it their own way and wanting to fight, doing it some of the ways that have, some of the methods that have proven effective?
Right, I think the problem is a lot of the big associations like AMA and those organizations and FDA, the ones that put out the recipe book for doctors to follow, they haven't endorsed those treatments. And some doctors are prescribing medications off-label and others won't. And now they are pulling back, I think, two of the monoclonal antibodies because they're not effective on Omicron. So the tools that they have in their toolbox just got to be less.
Well, today is, today is supposed to spike and start dropping, so.
Yeah, yesterday on the state call, they even said hospitalizations in some regions went down a little bit. So I'm hopeful that we're kind of on the, we're going to start going down.
So do the antibodies stay with you longer or the same amount of time or less time with the Omicron variant? Or the same or any clue?
I haven't heard that. And I think everybody's different, I really do. I mean, some people, yeah, you're not different. I don't think I've met anybody like you, Jeff.
You're way different.
Okay.
All righty.
Anything else?
I'm caught up now.
Okay.
All right, make a motion, we stand to recess until 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would have lost that bet. I was betting on the over today. That was a long agenda.